Okay, at six o'clock. Welcome to those that are just joining us this evening. I will ask the board, on our agenda, we have two public hearings. The first being on the moratorium and the second being on the ordinance with the smoking policy. Do I have, yes, do I have a motion to switch? And, okay, all right. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, so we will begin. I will open the public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to the Lee County Code of Ordinances, Article 3, use of smoking of tobacco in Lee County government buildings, on county property, and in county vehicles. Mr. Jones, if you would like to briefly give a reminder or synopsis. Thank you.
We started out with the advent of vaping and all that that's come up. And as I mentioned, two weeks ago, we had an incident in the tax office where someone blew the vapor up and it set off the fire alarm. And we just had some other concerns about that in public buildings. So, in doing that, we pretty much updated the ordinance to meet current rules and laws. And so, that's how it stands now.
And it should be noted that the ordinance, as it's proposed in the agenda, does include county property in addition to buildings and vehicles.
Right. Okay. All right, so the public hearing for this has been opened. Thank you. Would there, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone who would like to speak against? Okay, clear, this public hearing closed. Thanks, appreciate that. All right. Okay, now, for the second public hearing, to consider a proposed ordinance instituting a temporary moratorium on oil and gas development and mining within Lee County. And before we start things, we did have a sign-up sheet here just to facilitate things. Sometimes it's hard for us to catch names and addresses, but certainly, I'll go through the list and then, you know, at the end, if you were not here to sign up, you know, just stand up and you're certainly free to speak. If we could limit the time to three minutes, we've got a long list of folks here. And the attorney likes to say anything. Okay, all right. Those, I guess what we need to do... Right. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for this ordinance. And those that would like to speak in favor of the ordinance instituting the temporary moratorium, if you'll just come up, and I guess that's what I was thinking, because we didn't have a for and against sheet. So, if you want to just come up and I'll check your name off as we go. Anyone would like, no, okay.
Go right ahead. Pass them down. Sorry, I'll take that one.
And again, if you could just state your name and address, please.
My name is Charles Ritter. I live in Chatham County. And I come from North Chatham, not originally, originally from the north. I represent myself, and I want to thank you for having me here. There's a handout going around that will facilitate what I'm going to talk about. Retired aerospace engineer, and I deal only in facts, and I've been researching this for about three years. I was here in the wintertime, I gave you what was, told you what was going on then, what I knew. A lot has changed since then. In the winter, I spoke to the board and also the environmental board, both, one in January, one in February. Back then, my concerns were about water contamination, fracking chemicals going into the reservoir, Jordan Lake reservoir, where we have a very unique geology. And Figure A of the handout shows, and you probably know this here, shows what fracking does. It goes down and it goes horizontal, and it goes into the shale. Unlike Pennsylvania, where the shale is very deep, it's very shallow here. But the question is, where is it? And that is shown in Figure B. It's along this slice over here. It's a three-dimensional issue, so you kind of think of it like this. Here is the shale, okay, and this is above ground, this is below ground, this is the shale, this is the water table, and they intersect. And where do they intersect? I got this from the Geological Society, and you can see that the intersection is right through Lee County. Now, this was because they did, they did a survey along this line. We don't know what's to the north of the line or to the south of the line, so it probably extends in both directions. In the wintertime, I was also concerned about our nuclear power plant that's nearby, just about a mile over the county line, and it's near the Jonesboro Fall Line, two miles away from the fall line. Since the winter, Chatham, as you probably know, has put a two-year moratorium in place protecting, and that, this protects our reservoir from toxic chemicals, it protects the water supply to the city of Sanford, but not the wells in Lee County. So, since the winter, the number of nuclear, the concerns with nuclear plants have increased. Fracking now extends up to three miles. This is new information from the Wall Street Journal. So, you can actually frac in Lee County, two miles from the line, go across the line and frac technically and legally under the power plant, which is ridiculous, but that's the way it is. Fracking-induced earthquakes have risen drastically. In Oklahoma, in one area where there were one to two per year, there were, this year there were 1,100 plus per year. That's a drastic increase, okay? And this is all documented, I don't make this stuff up. You can't. I hosted a forum in August, and I invited the board to come, and with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, as well as representatives from Duke Energy to Shear and Harris Power Plant.
Mr. Ritter, we need to be respectful of time.
Okay, well, I'll just sum it up. What we learned is that the, there are nuclear plants and fracking in the same area, nuclear plants and the fall line in the same area. But nowhere in the United States are there all three. I even called Washington DC office.
Okay, thank you.
And so, I'm going to just wrap it up and say, I would hope we can put a moratorium in place to protect the citizens of North Carolina from the state which has, is trying to impose health and safety hazards on us.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker? In favor of the moratorium? And name and address, and please, let's try to keep it to three minutes, please.
Good evening, I'm Ed Harris. I live 231 Florence Harris Lane here in Lee County. I'm the individual that left the Constitution's Eric for all of you. I hope you'll take an opportunity to study them.
Thank you, sir.
I'm speaking in favor of the moratorium on fracking. We realize that you can't flip your magic twinger and make fracking disappear. The state legislature has pretty much neutered your ability to do anything without approval from the powers at state level. Landowners and the VOC can use the breathing space that a moratorium would provide to ensure that every possible measure that can be taken has been taken to protect the citizens and environment of Lee County. Lee County is the heart of North Carolina, and our location geographically makes us a very desirable location to live and raise a family. But Lee County has been under attack from dirty industry for over four years now. First, it was fracking, then it was coal ash, and then a new quarry. Dirty industry has decided they will turn Lee County into the armpit of North Carolina. And if dirty industry keeps targeting us, we're going to move much lower than the armpit. Outsiders have moved into our community, got themselves elected, were appointed to key decision-making positions on commissions, committees, and boards, and they're working hand-in-hand with dirty industry and absentee landowners to destroy the peace, quiet, and tranquility of our beautiful landscape and way of life. They don't care that they will affect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens and the environment. They don't live here, they just own land or business, this year. Dirty industry thinks they can steamroll over us and will stand by and take it. These industries and their shills want people to believe that there's nothing we can do about it. They're wrong. People also need to be informed that without changes and clarification in the laws on fracking, when Slick Willie the Landman and his partner Slick Wilhelmina get them to sign a lease, that they will not only share in the profits with the driller, but also in any liability or debt if the LLC filed bankruptcy due to lawsuits resulting in death, destruction, pollution, or non-payment of obligations, and the LLC's bond and assets are not sufficient to cover the damages afforded by a court. There's not enough protections for the landowners in place. Give us, the citizens of Lee County and yourselves, some breathing space and do all that you can to protect what we have here, because once it's gone, we can't replace it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I'll be with you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next speaker?
No, you're fine. We're not going to start your time yet till you're ready. Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Hello, I'm Martha Geralamy, a Chatham County resident, living over part of the Triassic Basin. And Chatham and Lee share this threat that fracking brings, and I hope will continue to support and share vital information. Looking over, back over the last two years, the commission will realize how many Lee residents have spoken to you at meetings and individually about their opposition to fracking and/or have asked questions about fracking impacts that no one knows the answer to. Let's just look at one question. Are your citizens safe from fracking chemical exposure? Well, can scientists prove that you will get cancer living downwind of a frac pad? There are thousands of reports by research scientists that find benzene and formaldehyde and other potent carcinogens at frac pads, wastewater pits, compressor stations, flares, tanks. Both chemicals are pervasive and often measured in significant concentrations. There is no safe exposure to these and many other frac chemicals. So, do you want to live downwind of a frac pad? How will that impact Lee and Sanford? What is going to be the proof? Are you going to rely on the denials of health effects by oil and gas representatives or local people with vested interests in fracking? Remember, there is no chemical testing requirement for the, by the Department of Air Quality once fracking begins. There is very limited chemical disclosure. There is no disclosure of trade secrets. There is no restrictions on flaring, no restrictions except for BTACs on what chemicals can be used. How can a community feel safe with this chemical-intensive industrialization of its neighborhoods and rural landscape? Many of the gravest impacts are documented in this updated version of the Compendium of Scientific, Medical, and Media Findings, demonstrating risks and harms of fracking, just recently updated. And I have a copy for you here.
Thank you.
That'll be $23. The race to frac has really shown how far the North Carolina General Assembly will go in bullying and eliminating community rights. If democracy is not local, does it exist? It is vital to stand up to the legislature now, or all communities will lose more and more. Towns and counties will lose property, like the water system was taken from Asheville without compensation, or the airport authority was taken from Charlotte, where various commissions have been reconfigured for political ends. When the North Carolina General Assembly is finished taking over publicly-owned property, then they will take over private property. The specter of imminent domain abuse, forced pooling, and property and community damage to facilitate fracking are all too real. Voting yes on a Lee County moratorium is a brave symbol of community rights and a very needed respite. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I emailed you all a copy of that. You can share.
Thanks, Keely.
My name is Keely Wood. I live at Angel Road in Sanford. I want to thank everyone on the Board of Commissioners. Most of you have a genuine interest in serving our community and a desire to make our county a better place to live. A recent article in the National Association of Counties detailed North Dakota's experience with the gas boom. The bacon shell, oil boom that drew tens of thousands of workers to the western portions of the state, has been a net loss for that region, according to the analysis by researchers from Duke University's Energy Initiative. Crime in Dunn County skyrocketed 60% in just three years, and the road maintenance budget soared from 1.5 million to $25 million. Meanwhile, demand for government services outpaced the growth in tax revenue as much as by 40%, a gulf, a gulf that will only grow as prices drop. Remember, local governments in North Carolina are prohibited from taxing fracking companies, and there is no provision in state law to set aside funds from state severance taxes to help localities pay for the infrastructure costs. Mackenzie County emergency services responded to about five traffic accidents a month before the oil boom. By night 2013, it was as many as five a day. The sheriff's office went from six officers to 22 officers. Yes, it created some jobs, but it also created more crime and truck accidents. I could not find the increase of the death toll. Do you want to protect Americans' property rights? Will forced pooling, known as compulsory pooling in North Carolina, give states the right to compel non-consenting landowners like myself into leasing their oil and gas rights for development, including fracking? General Statute 113, 393 makes forced pooling legal in North Carolina, but the law does not detail how or when forced pooling can happen. Therefore, North Carolina landowners are provided no assurance that their property rights will be protected. Forced pooling rules that were drafted by the MEC Committee headed up by Ray Covington were never approved. Under current North Carolina laws, forced pooling landowners and leases would not be held, would be held liable if an LLC gas and oil company created an environmental disaster and declared bankruptcy, and if their bond did not cover the disaster. We know that North Carolina with such a small shale play would attract most LLC companies. Please approve this moratorium to send a message to the General Assembly that a large percentage of our county residents do not want fracking and the effects of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker?
Thank you for drafting a moratorium on oil and gas development and holding a public hearing. There are not too many things that bring me out on a rainy night, but I felt this was important. And my name is...
Name and address.
I'll give you that.
Okay.
Jeannie Ambrose, Chatham County.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I was getting around to it. We know what the state has done, and it's prevented counties from stopping fracking, and local control is limited to dealing with nuisance issues like noise and light. So, what the Lee County Board of Commissioner does tonight really matters, and it matters to the citizens and as well to the citizens and Board of Commissioners in other counties. The health of the young, elderly, and anyone with respiratory problems are especially affected, but we are all vulnerable to environmental risk and pollution. There have been many reports and documentation that other people have presented and provided for you, but it's not as though we can lessen our risk of illness by avoiding someone like smoking or coughing or sneezing. We won't really know what threatens our ground or surface water, or what is being released into the air daily, but we will all pay when and if something happens. Approve the moratorium and take the time to reexamine the new regulatory changes being made in oil and gas-producing states to address the problems that are associated with unconventional drilling and its related operations and services. Look again at the budgetary cost to water and wastewater treatment facilities, health and law enforcement services. We are not poking a finger in the eye of the state legislature. We are trying to send a message to our state legislatures later that we care and we want to protect our natural resources and the health of our people. Our message is, we have listened to the people who actually live and work in our communities. And I'll provide you a copy later, because I've been scribbling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. Okay.
Before we did this, Lisa, can you check the, is it...
It is, it's not.
It's not working?
It's a hot topic, guys. You know, I guess that's what we're dealing with. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. Your name and address.
I'm Lynn Hutchbee, 401 Southwest Street in Cary.
Okay, thank you.
In Wake County. And I'm really happy to know that each of you have received already electronically this compendium, and then Martha's just given you the whole copy, so I don't need to do that again. But again, it is from the Positions for Social Responsibility, and the compendium is actually the third edition. So, this is not something new that we're dealing with, it's just we have more facts to reassure you the importance of your passing this moratorium. You're protecting your children, your grandchildren, and you're protecting all of your neighbors when you do this. So, I'd just like to read the conclusion of this compendium. Altogether, findings to date from scientific, medical, and journalistic investigations combined to demonstrate that fracking poses significant threats to air, water, health, public safety, climate stability, seismic stability, community cohesion, and long-term economic vitality. Emerging data from a rapidly expanding body of evidence continue to reveal a plethora of recurring problems and harms that cannot be averted or cannot be sufficiently averted through regulatory frameworks. In the words of esteemed pediatrician Jerome Paulson, "There is quote-unquote, 'No evidence that fracking can operate without risks to human health. Any claims of safety are based on wishful thinking.'"
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for that.
Okay, next speaker?
My name is Jeannie Rea, and I live on Dykes Road, 701. I didn't make any prepared remarks, I'm just asking that you all vote to put the moratorium in place. We came to, decided to stay in North Carolina because we had gone to Arkansas and discovered all about fracking. We came back to North Carolina and purchased a home here in Lee County, to only two weeks later discover that fracking might happen here. And so, it has been many years now that I've been studying it. I've seen the dangers personally. It hasn't been like, I heard this or heard that. So, I have come to love Lee County, the people here. I just have to leave. I don't want to leave. But our house has been on the market. Everyone who comes, they say, "You have a beautiful place." But we're not buying where there's fracking. And I know, sales are down here. I know it has hurt Lee County. We live so close to Raleigh. It's the best commute there is anywhere out of Raleigh, within an hour. There is no better. I've driven them all. We will ruin this county completely if we allow fracking.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next speaker? For the moratorium.
Good evening, I'm Therese Vick. I'm the North Carolina Healthy Sustainable Communities Campaign Coordinator for Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, which is a seven-state organization. You probably, a lot of you might think we're just in North Carolina, but we actually have member chapters in seven states, including chapters in Lee County, Stokes County, Anson County, and Chatham County, and Person, and anyway, on and on. But I'm here tonight to support the moratorium. And if I didn't, hadn't thought that fracking was bad to begin with, my research and participation in the Mining and Energy Commission's rulemaking process, and seeing the political shenanigans that have gone on about this process certainly led me to be concerned. But as Martha stated, every day, it seems like there's a study every day that increasingly shows in particular air emissions are affecting people almost immediately. And you will be joining Anson, Stokes, and Chatham County in a moratorium. Also, Rockingham County is now considering a moratorium. So is the little town of Walnut Cove. These are politically diverse communities, not just from one party or another. Well, actually, some of them are from one party or another. But it shows the concern that they have for their constituents, and they have done their own research, and they are, they are sending a message as well to the General Assembly that what North Carolina is proposing is not for their communities, that there aren't enough rules and regulations in place, if there could even be enough. And I'd be doubtful, seeing the politics that went on behind chemical disclosure and some other things, that anything meaningful could come. And we have been working on trying to get some air regs through the MEC now, let's see, for over a year. So, we're here to support you, and there are other communities you will be joining. You are not by yourself. And I think it's a strong message and shows that you care about your community. And I will say one thing real quick about property rights. Lee County is unique in North Carolina with split estates. I'm sure Ms. Hall probably talked about that. And that is an absolute, those folks are particularly vulnerable. In addition, we have forced pooling, as Mr. Harris spoke, that can compel you, and can be used to compel you. If somebody, one person says that they need to get on or through your property to get to their, the back part of their, you know, their, their land to get their resource, they can apply to be, for that person to be made to participate. They, you know, they have really no say. So, that's, that's where you're protecting the property rights. You're protecting the property rights of the people who have no rights under North Carolina law. So, we thank you for your consideration of the moratorium, and again, we do support you very strongly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for giving me a chance to talk. My name is John Wagner. I'm a resident of Chatham County. And Chatham and Lee are both facing fracking, and I encourage you to, to vote for the moratorium. And I'm going to give you four very short reasons that I think it's critically important. The first is that document which has been given to you. It's an incredibly important summary of peer-reviewed scientific journal articles that document the effects on air, water, health, communities. It also addresses roads and damage to the county and to the communities, and it's broken down by sections. It's very easy reading, and it's all documented very carefully. And so, I encourage you to take a look at it, and it will support the moratorium without question. Second thing is, I've seen fracking. I've gone to Dimmock, Pennsylvania, and Montrose, Pennsylvania, and to West Union, West Virginia, and spoken personally with members of the community who have been affected, had their water ruined, had their lives totally disrupted, and have had their health damaged. The third thing is, Lee and Chatham County have a unique geological feature which has a direct impact on how quickly our water will be contaminated. The shallowness of the shale has already been mentioned, but we have diabase dikes, which is a feature that comes up through the shale and into the groundwater and up to the surface that will act as a pipe directly from the contaminated fracking fluids into the groundwater. And it deserves attention, and Lee County needs to look at that, and the moratorium gives you a chance to have that studied. And the last thing is, something which isn't mentioned very often about fracking is violence against women. The U.S. Department of Justice had to form a special task force on violence against women in the Bakken area of North Dakota. You can find it on the web. I can send you information on that. But the problems were so extreme that they had to form a special task force and have a website for people to report problems and have them dealt with specifically because of the oil and gas industry. So if Lee County wants to protect itself from the water contamination and from the violence and all the problems, a moratorium is not only reasonable, it's essential. You need to protect the citizens and the community, and I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Okay. Any other speakers for the moratorium?
Hi, I'm Terrica Luxton. I'm from 3616 Lee Avenue. As an environmental lead member, landowner, and grandmother, I want to thank you for doing this moratorium. I'm not going to say that you're not going to do it. I have to believe in my heart you are. Thank you for doing this moratorium for the Lee County people, and I want to thank you for facing the bully. Many of us have been studying fracking for many years and know the threats that come to a growing boomtown, to the people's health and environment. You've had some of those mentioned tonight. They will leave a stigma on Lee County. We can't clean up. We want to grow into a city we could be proud of and not a dirty industry magnet. Let us become a place people want to visit, a place people possibly stay to live and grow businesses, not just exploit and dump on. Last, I would like to ask a question. We have been calling this a fracking moratorium, but if I read it right, this should also protect us from all mining, including rock quarries too dang close to residents and city activities to be safe, right? This is also Debbie Hall's comments, since she couldn't be there.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any other speakers in favor of the moratorium? Okay, anyone like to speak against the moratorium? Good evening. Hi.
Jeanne Cashin, 1191 Henley Road. Yes, I and others are against the moratorium and any changes to the residential agriculture zoning district. I had a prepared speech, but however, listening to the ones who have come before me, I've changed it a little bit because I've heard reference to absentee landowners and people that don't reside within the county but yet own land. And however, I represent individuals who are the landowners, who are the actual heritage of this county. And I'm going to pass over a copy of that history of our county, of our ancestors and the people that I represent and who you will also be provided with a petition tonight of those landowners who own their land, and we have owned it before Lee County Sanford ever existed. Yes, this is our heritage. These are our ancestors who are listed in here. We're the reason why Lee County and Sanford was formed.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so far as accurate information regarding the fracking, our attorney has contacted our group and asked us, would we like to have another meeting with Dr. Ken Taylor, who is the geologist for the state of North Carolina? And would we like to have that meeting before the end of this year? We told her yes, and we also told her what was going on within our county and the actions of our county commissioners, and asked that when this meeting is set up, that you are all invited so that you can hear from one of your own state employees the actual truth of the changes, the maps, and the directions that this is going in. Yes, we can get information from all over sources, from the internet, from newspapers, Wall Street Journal was mentioned, but how accurate is it? We have one of the best engineers in Dr. Ken Taylor, who is a state employee paid by all our tax dollars, who has done extensive research on this. We know we have an aquifer under our property, some of it, and yet Dr. Ken Taylor, with his research and the changes that have been made for this oil and gas industry, we know that aquifer will be protected because the rules and regulations that he has put in place are stricter than any that the Bakken, that the Marcellus, or any of the other drilling areas are. So I hope that you will wait, that you will attend the meeting that Dr. Ken Taylor will have, that you will get educated in the scientific facts. Thank you. And the petition, I hope that you'll all look at the names that are on there because they're voters in all of your districts.
Do you have a date for that meeting?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
I have the petition names. I'm sorry. My name's Ashdale Bullard. I live on 107 Pleasure Lane in Sanford, and I have a...
Sure, sure, please. Thank you, ma'am.
These are just a few names that we got, and I have talked to several other Lee County owner, landowners, and they are opposed of this moratorium. And people are talking about fracking was bad for the health. Well, everybody drives cars, has fumes. That's bad for your health. So in far as the water, I don't think the water is going to be all that bad for your health, no more than people that's on county or city water drinks water from the river, which the sewage has been dipped into, dumped into, and then a lot of chlorine, putting that in. Chlorine is not good for you either. So I am against the moratorium, and if you would see, search your hearts and come up with a good answer.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the moratorium? Even if you didn't sign up, that's, just want to make sure we don't miss anybody. Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you for coming out, and there being no further business unless anyone has anything or motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, folks. Safe travels home.
When is the decision going to be made?
This was the first reading.
This is the first reading.